Oh, six. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. City Clerk, if you'll please do the roll call.
Vice Mayor Grill.
Here.
Commissioner Friselski.
Here.
Commissioner Maron.
Here.
Commissioner Grous.
Here.
Mayor Petrella.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Great. We're going to continue the employee presentation. All right, great.
Yes, the employee had a family emergency, so we're going to schedule that to the next meeting.
Okay, great. And then we'll have the evaluation appraisal report update.
Yes, and we have Philip Di Maria and Kelly Klepper from, you know, to present that.
Very good. Thank you, City Manager, Mayor, members of the commission. It's my pleasure to be before you again today. My name is Philip Di Maria. For the record, I'm a certified planner with Kim Lee Horn and Associates, and Kelly Klepper is sitting behind me, senior planner with Kim Lee Horn and Associates. Just, we'll keep the presentation fairly brief today. We wanted to, especially in light of the conversation that you all were just having. But we did want to provide some background on the scope of work that we've been performing over the course of the last three years, working with staff, Forward Pinellas staff, as well as members of the Department of Economic Opportunity that have been spoken to by Mr. Dickman tonight, those folks up in Tallahassee, they're certified planners up there. I'll skip over the what is a comprehensive plan. I could not do as well or as thorough of a job as your staff and the city attorney have done tonight. You've gotten a really excellent history of the city's comprehensive planning efforts over the last few years, but I will focus in on that evaluation appraisal report and the letter that'll be required here over the course of the next few months, as well as the report, the details inside of it, as well as some of the strike through and underline text, what those covered, what our priorities were, and the direction that we were given at the beginning of this effort, as well as where we are today and looking towards the very near future, as well as the intended outcomes. So, brief history, we began this effort in about March of 2020 when COVID started. There have been some delays along the way, but performing a variety of efforts over time, really getting a really deep, good understanding of the city's comprehensive plan and land development regulations, how they interact, the county's countywide plan that is regulated by Forward Pinellas, as well as the state statutes that apply to municipalities like St. Pete Beach that are in coastal, high-hazard areas. We've been in front of this commission several times, see some familiar faces, as well as the planning board several times, getting feedback, working with staff, a really iterative process that we feel like is nearing the end of its, nearing the end of really finalizing a finished product that we can all be proud of. So, the revisions themselves, they exist in strike through underline format in their current state. They focused on these priorities, and you'll notice that these differ, these ones in the bottom right of your screen differ from some of the conversation today, which has been primarily focused on what we call mainly policy level items. We haven't changed or made any modifications. Our understanding is that they were completely off the table as it relates to density, intensity, ISR, FAR, all those development standards that really create the box that development can occur in, none of those items were touched. We focus on reorganization readability, we would call those like quality of life improvements. We focus on the statutory changes. So, since 2015, and certainly since 2000, there have been a host of different modifications to the Florida statutory regulations, as well as on the countywide plan level, and those need to be reflected in every city's comprehensive plan. So, we have a list in matrix format. We ran through that list, made modifications, proposed modifications to the plan, and brought those before you in the past, as well as reflecting some future planning efforts. Some include items like a Parks and Recreation Open Space Master Plan that could be of interest to the city, adding some language within the plan as it relates to those sorts of languages, as well as level of service changes. So, recognizing that there are pieces of the level of service element within the infrastructure element, such as sewer level of service, and recognizing that the methods of measurement and the methodology used to calculate those levels of service could use some quality of life updates as well. So, as far as next steps are concerned, finalize this evaluation appraisal report process, we need to complete a data inventory and analysis, and that's been the focus of some of this conversation as well, on how the state requires comprehensive plans to be based in some sort of professionally acceptable data inventory and analysis. In late May, we'll be providing strike through and underline and clean formatted documents to the city for review, and we'll be back before you in the months after, and presenting those documents to you for your approval, really transmittal to the state for their professional review as well. Once they provide either an ORC report, providing comments, or providing approval and stating that the documents that you've provided are adoptable, then we'll be able to adopt the comprehensive plan in that format and proceed with finalizing and finishing out the scope of work. With that, I'll open it up to any questions that you might have, but as stated, really just wanted to give you an overview of what efforts have been performed, and what's upcoming, and what you'll see before you in the near to mid-future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, do we have any changes to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, excuse me, I have a few changes I'd like to suggest. I'd like to move consent item 4B from the consent agenda to action items. A couple of points on that one. And then I'd like to add two discussion items to the agenda. The first one is on, excuse me, on ordinance 2019-18, which is the ordinance on tree permits. I'd like to have a quick discussion on that. This is the tree permits, removals, and fees, and I'll talk more about that in a minute. And then the second discussion item is on the city manager evaluation. Thank you.
Any other changes?
No.
I would like to add a discussion item on the use of city consultants. Okay. Do we have a motion to amend the agenda as stated?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I'm assuming 4B is now going to become 5B?
5B. Yep. City Clerk, if you would mind.
Commissioner Friselski.
Yes.
Commissioner Maron.
Yes.
Commissioner Grous.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Grill.
Yes.
Mayor Petrella.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, we'll take audience comments, please.
Okay, so this person, they didn't come to see me until let me know they're here, but they turned in a card, so out of respect, I wanted to call them just in case they are here, Pamela Payne.
Hello, Commissioners and Mayor. I'm Pamela Payne, Second Street East. Do you need my exact address?
That's good, thank you.
Okay. He assures. I'm here actually representing some of my neighbors, I hope that's okay. They're out of town, but they sent me an email that they wanted me to share some of their concerns. So, that's not my personal experience recently. Is that acceptable for me to do?
Sure.
Okay. So, this is an experience that my neighbor across the street, Mr. Dan Bartlett, had recently. He said, "My family and I were sitting yesterday," which was a few days ago, "my family and I were sitting about 20 feet from the water line in front of the empty lot between Trade Winds and Coral Reef. We have used this area as our beach since we have lived on Second Street East. We have, we were accosted by Trade Winds' security and told we had to move. I declined politely. Security also told several others from Coral Reef to move as well. They were in front of their own building. Security then called the sheriff. The sheriff told us that we could stay today, but things were going to change. I do not know what that means, but I will not be told where I can sit, especially when we were told that we were in the sightlines of their guests." And "they" meaning Trade Winds. "Trade Winds allow rentals of umbrellas, and you can put them anywhere. This is an outrage. How dare they tell residents where they can sit? These hotels have plenty of beachfront. They cannot, this cannot stand. We elected you because we felt strongly that you will go to bat for our residents. Please keep me informed." And I would, this is Dan, of course, he would also like to know where the ordinances can be found that support or do not support this activity. Coral Reef residents are already contacting their management about this as well." Okay. And then, and then this is my response to that. "I would also like to read the ordinance which supposedly addresses this issue. Many questions, first of all, about the high tide line or high watermark, or whatever it's called. I tried to look it up in the law, and I'm like, okay, I'm not a lawyer. Okay, I don't, or an oceanographer. So, I couldn't really understand the lingo. And so, that's a question, and I think I'm not the only one with that question, if we're just supposed to look and see where the seaweed, you know, ran up to, or something. So, there's a question about where that exactly is, also if there was an easy identical way to mark that. I don't know if it changes with the tide, or if it stays fairly much the same or not, so that's kind of a nebulous thing for me. Also, we who just live two blocks from the beach are expected to only sit on the beach areas where, which are not near any big hotels. That would be a very long walk, especially toting one's beach chairs, et cetera." Oh, am I done? Okay. Do I have to stop abruptly? Okay.
If you don't.
Anyway, that's pretty much it. So, I just wanted to express those concerns, and I don't, I know they're not new, but I think more information would really be helpful just for us commoners who don't understand law lingo. So, thank you very much for listening to me, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Pamela.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, do we, can we ask the city manager, maybe you can give a quick update? I think, I don't know if this was the case per se, what Trade Winds said that they, excuse me, was there a different approach on the beach? I mean, we have a discussion going on, and where is the mean high tide water line? Who's entitled to sit on one end of the beach? And I don't know if there was confusion. I was also contacted, I think we all received some emails about the comment in second hand made by the sheriff, this is going to change, you can sit here today? I mean, I'm not aware.
Yeah, I have no, I'm not aware of what the officer was referring to, or which officer it was. This, the only thing that is going to change is the beach ordinance that we are going to be revisiting here, but I don't know that that beach order is going to change anything related to what happened in this case. So, I'm not saying that the officer didn't say it, but I don't know why they would have said that. My understanding is that Trade Winds, first of all, they do own the property all the way to the high watermark. It is their property, it's personal property, that, real property that they own. What I've been told by them is that their position is that if somebody sits there with a towel or a beach chair, that they would not, you know, object to that. But if somebody builds, you know, a tent in front of the tavern areas, chairs, umbrellas that they're renting, and they put something in front of that, that if obstructs the view, then they will ask those people to relocate. It is their property, and they can, you know, act accordingly as property owners, but that's my understanding of their policy.
Okay, thank you.
Do we know exactly what the definition is of the mean high water line?
Yes, there is, there's a definition in state law, and actually, the beach ordinance has a definition of where the high water line is.
Okay.
But it's, she's not incorrect. It's basically, it is a line where you see the demarcation and the change in the composition of the sun, you know, as you go from the water to the.
It's wet sand. Dry sand.
Yeah, yeah. And typically, seaweed accumulates there because that's where the water moves it to, so.
And that's a state definition, not a local definition, correct?
That's correct, right. Yeah.
Any other comments?
Deborah Schenner.
Good evening, Deborah Schenner, Boca Seagull Drive in St. Pete Beach. As you were talking about all of this development, I want to remind people that Commissioner Rutten Cutter was District Three Commissioner, and I believe you were mayor at the time, Mr. Friselski, they were supporting 20-story buildings. That was where we were going to go. I also want to point out that it's very important to know, we did not vote on this comprehension plan. People seem to think we have. We did not vote on it as residents, period, not even a question. We did not vote on it. Hundreds and hundreds of residents would come because they did not like the way the city was going in that direction of high density, high traffic, which you cannot ignore, tall buildings, and basically turning our city over to tourists. An example, which I just told to you today, Trade Winds did not want her and her friend to be in their sightline. Are we now to walk in boxes on a beach so that their guests won't be objectionable to us as residents who pay all the bills? Very, very important things to think about. We are being classified as second-class citizens with all of this nonsense going on, and I hear about people being harassed, sheriffs called. I'm going to say, two or three times a week, people tell me this is happening to them. And I have told you the one where the police officer came, and the little boy who was so scared that his daddy was going to get arrested, because why else would a police officer come while they're enjoying their time at the beach to tell them to move? This is unconscionable, what's going on with the hotels. They really don't care. They're not a part of our community at all. They look at us as a necessary evil in my eyes. Yeah, we really want St. Pete Beach, all these big conglomerates and big money finance are coming, but those residents are so pesky and so annoying, and they don't want us to have everything we want. I also want to mention that a variance is based on a hardship. If you look up the definition of hardship, it seems like we've been giving away variances over the years, very easily. Conditional use permit clearly should be denied in Lido property, and I hope that it is. You cannot have a hotel and parking lot next to residents on both sides of that property. Three people have died at that corner. Two recently, one a couple of years ago, a dad, tourist, family members were injured. That's three deaths at that corner? Yet, you're even considering that? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, consent item 4A, approval of the city commission meetings for March 28th and April 11th. So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Maron.
Yes.
Commissioner Grous.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Grill.
Yes.
Commissioner Friselski.
Yes.
Mayor Petrella.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, action item 5A, the Fire Station 22 design, please.
Hi, everyone. I have an update on our Fire Station 22 project, and seeking your direction on a couple of points. Just to give you some context, the city issued a request for qualifications back in May of 2021 for this project. We have $4 million budgeted for the project. We authorized Phase One services for preliminary design and architectural services back in May of 2022, and we're now complete with that first phase. So, the first phase was basically a pre-designed package, so a needs assessment process with the fire department, site analysis, surveys, et cetera. And importantly, as part of Phase One, we'll get to this as we move along, but one important takeaway is to just keep in mind that the current station, as it's currently laid out on the property, does not conform to current zoning setback requirements. I also want to mention that the current state of the facility is by no means adequate for modern servicing of fire station needs. At various budget workshops over the last couple of years, we've provided photos of what the interior of this facility looks like, and Jim is here to give you any insight on that. We've got, we do have the photos available, if you want me to pull them up, I'll just kind of proceed, and then if you want me to pull them up, I can, but just a couple of quick examples, there's no separate bunk rooms in the current facility, no dedicated fitness or, you know, training types of facilities that would commonly be provided in a fire station. And so, also want to mention, as part of that first phase, fire chief, district chief, and myself toured a couple of the facilities that were designed by the selected architect, Sweet Sparksman is the name of the firm. And it's just important to keep in mind, you know, we selected them not only based on the scrutiny involved in the request for qualification process, but as part of that, you know, one of the key criteria in reviewing the various firms was their experience in building fire stations in these historic, unique areas, particularly with some of challenging geographies. And so, some of the facilities that we toured essentially matched exactly what we're looking for in terms of both the geography and the unique site conditions. So, with that said, the result of this first phase is two different options that are presented by the firm. They were included in the agenda packet, and they were reviewed by the Historic Preservation Board a couple of weeks ago. And I will, I guess I'll describe them first, and then I'll pull up the slides, but what we're calling Option A does extend into the current setback, into the zoning setbacks, similar to the current facility. But in our architects' view and staff's view, it is consistent with site characteristics in Passageway. It does provide for onsite surface parking, and it has, importantly, greater maneuverability for apparatus as they're moving in and out of the bays than Option B. It is approximately 1,000 square feet greater than Option B. It has an additional, I think it has an additional office space and a separate reporting room that the second option does not have. There are some minor differences in the lobby and elevator layouts and whatnot. Alternatively, Option B is designed to conform with all of the setback requirements, and you'll see the, sort of the stark difference in the illustrations between the two facilities, but, and you'll see also sort of a design in that, in that Option B. Generally, it still does accommodate the fire department's program, so for the most part, it provides all of the needs that the department is looking for, but the two particular constraints are with regard to parking and, again, moving the apparatus in and out of the bay, so it probably would require backing in the fire trucks into the bays. And so, this would be a good point to just kind of pause and show the slides, so, okay, thanks. Okay, so these are some of the stations that met the criteria I was describing earlier. So, Sweet Sparksman has designed these stations that were, you know, also built in unique historic areas. We personally toured the Captiva Station and a couple of others that aren't on this slide. And so, again, keep in mind, these are just conceptual preliminary renderings, but this, the first three slides show what we're calling Option A. So, again, this does not conform to the setback requirements, but I'll say, staff does feel that is, you know, more, more consistent with the site characteristics in Passageway based on the architect's input.
So, what's on the south side of the building?
It's the high and dry.
Right. Sorry?
It's the high and dry yard, boatyard.
No, no, I'm sorry.
That belongs to the boatyard next door?
No, I'm sorry, the next building, stay on the other chart. Okay. Above the fire truck, what's on the roof? What is that?
Solar panels?
Solar panels. Preliminary, nothing set in stone by any means.
And if there are no solar panels, what does it become?
Just a roof.
Just a roof?
Yes.
Patio area possibly.
Yeah, I think we've talked about making it accessible.
That's a possibility, but not required.
And this, this tower here is something that's just a design feature that's not required?
Yeah, Jim can.
West, northwest corner?
Can elaborate on that.
So, we were kind of wishlisting that, and that tower is a training tower that's incorporated into the building. It's also a rear egress. So, they made it one level higher. Within that tower would be an ability to practice with Stokes baskets, repel, advanced hose lines. It's important for us to train onsite because of our, the way we're dispatched currently is through actual vehicle location, so if this apparatus, this crew went to Station 23, for instance, to train, they would be the closest unit from that location, not this location. So, we want to keep them in-house and in that area as much as possible. So, that was the idea behind that training tower to be there, so, but as Ben said, it's just a conceptual thing at this point, so kind of a wishless.
Take it away. So, those first group of slides with the white structure would be Option A, and then Option B, again, importantly, does fit within the constraints on the site, and is obviously designed a little bit with a, you know, different style as well. But the challenge, as it's showing the fire truck into the bay, is probably the main, I will say, is probably the main challenge with this design as it's currently laid out.
So, the previous picture showed it going in headfirst?
This is, this is not possible, the turning radius is.
You can do it in the picture here, but you really can't do it in real life.
Artist rendition.
Yes, this would be an artistic kind of license, but.
Okay, please.
They would be backing in, and as you can see on the north end, there's parking kind of cut into the curb, as opposed to the parking spaces that were at the other, in the other conceptual drawing.
Yeah, where that white truck is currently illustrated, we would have to come up with, you know, some sort of a.
That's for the employees to.
Cut out to make that happen?
Yeah, and in this, in this, in this concept, the, all of the activity is on the second floor.
Correct.
Our thought is that the apartment, the station is in a neighborhood, so we wanted to, in the design, express the interaction that we have with the neighborhood. There's a room to do blood pressures, there's a training slash activity room or meeting room to make it kind of immersed with the community in different ways, and have the crews downstairs as much as possible to interact with the community. So, this kind of isolates them and puts them on the second floor, and to me, doesn't really meet the vibe, you know.
You go back to the, to the previous slide, Vince, for just a second? One more? Back to the white building, I'm sorry. So, this one here, you have on the ground floor, so you've got the apparatus, the three bays for the apparatus here, then the, then the ground floor here, if I was seeing correctly in the floor plan, that's where you have some community meeting rooms, things like that, and then the, the actual living facilities for the firefighters are actually on the upper level, so you have some separation of where they would be staying as opposed to where the public would be hanging out.
Exactly. So, in the, in the bottom floor, there's a, there's a room where you can, you know, do triage or tear or fill a bicycle tire, you know, the type of things that we do down in that station, that can all be done in that area downstairs. And it's, you know, up seven steps, so it's not at ground level. And it's, it's, you know, up seven steps, so it's not at ground level as well. So, it's, you know, FEMA compliant. So, it's really bringing that station to current, you know, standards.
And where was the, where was the employee parking here? Is on the, on the north side, correct? North side towards the back?
There's three spaces. There's a handicap space on the north side, and then two stalls. So, I believe there's three spaces there.
Yep.
And then on the backside, I think there's two spaces in the probably more detailed drawings.
And that's attic, that's what your team needs at that station?
That's, yes.
Well, probably more importantly, it's what fits on the site.
Right. And you have a 0.26 acre postage stamp that this land is on. So, the design is just incredible. The, the effort they put into it is really amazing to me, what they made.
So, but both of these, I'm assuming, but I'll ask, both of these designs meet all the requirements for the state and, I mean.
Yes.
For new firehouses.
Yes. But, I, I'm sorry, Commissioner, but, but this function is so much more, you know, this Option A, the function is more, you know.
So, what, do we have an estimate on the difference in cost between A and B?
That was my next question.
That's Vince's question.
Well, let's keep in mind, so this was Phase 1, all preliminary. There's no opinion of probable cost included in this scope from the architects. But, we are generally working with an estimate of $750 a square foot for the facility, which, by the way, would be very challenging for our budget. So, that's just, it's just a working estimate. Based on those numbers, it would be a difference of $700,000 between the two different designs. But again, don't quote me on that. Don't commit us to that. That's just purely, you know, for planning purposes at this point.
Because we had, the reason I ask is, we had approved, I mean, I remember we went through Sparkman and, and we'd approved Sparkman to do the design. And we had money, or we were hoping to have money in last year's state budget for the build of this facility, which we all agree, we know we need it, it's important, and for all the good reasons why we're discussing it tonight. And then, if I remember correctly, the, the governor with his line item veto lined out every fire station around the state. Are we, are we back in the running, this budget cycle? And, because the design's great, then we have to go build the thing. And, and, yeah, I mean, we, we're always obviously trying to get an idea of, of cost. Is, is state funding in the picture still, or?
Yeah, so, right now, and, and the mayor can probably give you the, the most recent update, but we do have $2 million in the House budget and $1 million on the Senate budget. And our representative is trying to work her magic to increase the Senate side allocation, so we can get $2 million on both, on both houses. And, but it's all subject to the governor's approval. The timing on this is such that, once you, let's say you approve Option A today, that has to go for the border of appeals to get the variances. So, that's going to take a couple of months. Once, assuming the variances get approved, then the design process will begin based on the type and size of facility that you have, you choose today. That is going to take, I would say, easily six to nine more months. And this is supplemental contract that has to come back to you to get that design work, because we only approve them through the conceptual design process, right? So, it has to come back to you, and then we got to make a decision as to whether we are going to do a design bid or, or CM at risk, you know, and what construction approach we're going to be following with, with this. All of that is going to give us time to, we'll know by then that the money got appropriated or not in the legislature. We got $2 million from our side to match the, the $2 million from the state. And if, as we go through the, in designing process, you know, and we get bids, we'll know if those numbers are forming our number sticks, or we have to come up with some additional money. I know that.
Yeah, I can tell you right now, but, I don't know, I, I'll just kind of weigh in myself. I think Option A is by far the better option from both a functional standpoint and aesthetic standpoint to fit in Passageway. Like, the historic board weighed in that way too?
Yes, yes, yes.
And, and, I mean, I'm concerned about the dollars too, so I appreciate that. I think you have the same questions. But, I think I, I said a while back that $4 million's not going to cut it. I just kind of know, you know, I don't design fire stations, but we're looking at something more. It'd be great if the state can help us out. But, I, I think that's the way we ought to go. I have a couple other questions that, I know we've already kind of talked to the chief about, is, and that's that, you know, what do we, we're challenged because obviously they can't operate exactly out of there. So, we're going to have to think about how they're going to operate. As hard as this is going to be, whether it's at Warren Webster or wherever they can kind of, I think, kind of just commandeering Warren Webster is sort of what I'd be in favor of. I'm not sure how many organizations use that and how, what a hardship that would be. But, obviously, the fire department's a necessary.
I think that when, during the RFQ process, they were talking about staging at Warren Webster.
That, that, yeah, that's what I mean. I mean, they just would have to utilize Warren Webster as their inconvenient home away from home.
No, they were actually talking about staging.
Oh, construction?
Yeah, because there's no room on the site.
Well, that's true. That's another challenge. But, boy, they've got to have a place to stage too, so.
Possibly stage at Hurley Field and then live out of Warren Webster. Kind of take over Warren Webster for the duration.
Yeah, yeah.
I think would be the easiest, but obviously open for discussion.
I think, I know this isn't for today, but just to kind of think, because I'm, you know, I do a lot of this stuff, and I think having a construction manager would be a better way to go. And that's where we put out an RFP to some really qualified contractor who then visits the subs, and we lock them in, and we get them in early, and they can talk all about this logistics and that. And there's plenty of qualified contractors that have fire station experience. But, you know, this is a big decision, so I don't take the dollar amount lightly. But, this is a decision that's going to carry us forward for decades to come. So.
Right, I think this is a 50-year.
Yeah, even though that option costs more, I think it gets them what they want and deserve and fits in with the fabric of the community. So, that's what I, I would be in favor.
So, I'm sorry.
And then there, there is a logistical issue of having to go before or, or of adjustment for, to get a variance. And there's no guarantee that that's going to happen.
Right, I was going to say, we, we need a variance. And I don't know if we can demonstrate the hardship that's necessary for variance.
There is definitely hardship here. I mean, I'm.
A versus B. No, no, the hardship is A versus B, but that's a different process.
I guess you can make that argument, yeah.
Yeah, but the, the issue of the vehicle flow through the station, yeah, I think is the most critical component of demonstrating the hardship. Whether you have a bigger day room or a big exercise room doesn't, but, you know, having the ability to maneuver the vehicles through the facility is key to their operation. So, I, I think, based on those concerns, I think that you probably have a good case for hardship.
It's a safety issue every time you back an apparatus in. So, we're taking a chance every time we back an apparatus.
No, I understand. I just, we're reminded frequently about variances and what they mean. So, just, we need to be prepared. Maybe we don't get the answer we want. But, okay.
And, and if we don't, we'll be back here. I'll let you know.
Fine, just, just talking.
But, the, the, Mr. Mayor, the motion that we need is approval to apply for the variance, because the variance request has to be authorized by the property owner, which is this board. So.
Do we not need to validate the, so the borderline, excuse me, the historic board is just a, I mean, I haven't received anything from them except the verbal, "A, we go with Option A."
Yeah.
Is that the extent of it?
And you, and you need to just, we, you can say in the motion, "We agree with the recommendation for the historic board and go with Option A." That's number one. But, number two is, we authorize, you know, the manager to apply for a variance for this facility, yeah, to be able to construct the facility to the size that is being recommended under Option A.
Okay, understood. I think just as a side, in the future, if we do receive a recommendation from a board, some, either representative of the board comes to the meeting, or they send us an email or a memo or something that we can touch, feel, smell, look at, to know what they think.
Yeah, it should be in the minutes of their meeting, but that probably should have been part of the presentation today. And I've talked to many residents since I was providing, provided, I think on day one, my first meeting with Alex and Jennifer was the design proposals. And I had been part of the RFQ process, so I got to meet with the different architects and listen closely to, I mean, they're all the CAT 5, they have the, you know, every, all the safety equipment. It's all integral to every single thing that they did. And I remember this particular company, I believe they were doing stuff in Little Gasparilla Island, and with the way they were able to manage small properties, postage stamp properties, and still come out with a product that's, you guys can use for 50 years, I was impressed with. I shared it with many of the residents in my district. They immediately pointed to Option A. I had a couple of people say, "Well, Option B's not too bad," but they were kind of looking at it from, well, brick's kind of like a fire station, but really weren't looking at it from the standpoint of the practicality, because they weren't really part of this process of what your needs are. But, from just an aesthetic, pure aesthetic standpoint, it was an overwhelming, you know, Plan A.
We, we need a motion.
Deborah Schechner? Good evening, Deborah Schechner, Bochse Lake Isle Drive in St. Pete Beach. First, I want to say our fire and EMTs are wonderful, community advocates. They're involved in our community. They do things. A triage room, fabulous, absolutely wonderful. My only concern, well, first of all, I don't agree with variances, but in this case, I will, just so, you know. I want to make sure that this fire station has the capacity as we grow our community in the sense of tourism. So, I don't have, think we have to build anything bigger, but I, I just wanted to clarify that this will serve us for the future and the possibility of how many people come to our island. A representative's name is Linda Chaney, and she has been working hard to get us this money last year. And again, you know, the governor vetoed that. Perhaps he'll be more generous this time because fire departments are extremely, extremely important. And I would maybe ask the community to write the governor and say, "Please approve the grant money for St. Pete Beach and their fire department," because, believe it or not, emails matter. So, I'd like our community to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. That does bring up a good question though, Chief. So, this meets our current needs. But, how does it look if, you know, as we saw earlier, we might increase by 20, 35%? How does that serve our needs if we have a 10%, 20% increase, for example?
I think the structure, you know, meets that need and that future need. I think that's part of the design process as we move forward. I think the space is there if we need to expand. But, that's just part of the next step, when we go into that next step. So.
The space is there in the.
Square footage. And so, I mean, those are.
Apparatus.
Could be assigned in, in different ways right now, but if we do expand, and we do add staff, and we do add apparatus, then I think that footprint will be able to fit that additional staff, you know, within that structure.
Right, the bottom line is, you're never going to add another engine, full-size engine to this property. It just, it just, there's, there's just no way. I mean, that will just never happen. So, you know, we're equipped in two, two sections of this city to meet, I guess, to meet the needs that we have. And they're, for the better, for better or worse, I think they're strategically placed. And you guys know better, it's really about response time, I think, more than anything else. With those three engines, we probably have capacity to do whatever we need to do, not to mention the fact that there are scenarios where other fire departments are called to assist from other communities. We hope that never happens. But, I really think, you know, that property looks maxed out to me. And I think it, just from sitting there and, and the RFQ process, it's, the place got everything. It really does.
And if, if I may remind Commissioner Grill, when you first got to the commission, I believe that you asked, "Why do we have two fire stations and not operate with one?"
I remember that discussion.
Right. And the, the answer to that really is because of response time. Because if you are only operating out of Station 23, and you live in, you're living in West Pina del Mar, it's going to take you 15, 20 minutes to get there. So, we don't have two stations because of volume of calls. We have two stations because of how long and narrow our island is, you know, and only has one road, you know, to connect between the two. So, there, there is capacity within the existing system for, for growth.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize staff to proceed with the Fire Station 22 Design.
And, and apply for a variance.
And apply for a variance.
I second the motion.
City Clerk, roll call, please.
Commissioner Grous.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Grill.
Yes, but were we clear enough that we chose Option A in the motion?
I'll add it in there.
Okay, yes.
That's what I'm hearing.
Yes, yes.
That's what I'm hearing in the discussion. Commissioner Frazowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Moreau.
Yes.
Mayor Petrilla.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. All right, action item 5B, authorize the city manager to expend funds in the amount of $60,000 for building department services provided by Jill Payne Incorporated.
Good evening. I'm Julie Anderson. I'm the Building Division Manager. I wrote this agenda report and wanted to request the additional funding for JPI because we've had some recent changes and some things that have sort of handicapped our department a little bit. And we rely on the consultant, the, the private provider firms to help us when we are down. So, we've, we hit a bit of a bump, losing an inspector. We had an injured building official, and we had a deputy building official that was out on family leave. So, we, we had a bit of a bump. And so, we're looking for additional funding for that and to have that as a reserve for backup whenever those situations arise.
Yeah, and I will add that the deputy building official is going to have back surgery in the, you know, very, very near future. He'll be out for a couple of weeks. But, in the meanwhile, we have put an RFP out on the street, and we have one proposal that the, Vince and the procurement team and, and Julie are going to be reviewing the qualifications of this proposal. And we're hoping that by May, we'll be bringing another contractor as well that have been, you know, that has been separately bid by us. This is a contract that we're picking back in, from Treasure Island. So, we'll have our own bid proposal.
Was there only one submitted?
Only one submitted. It's, it's, it's a difficult market.
Yeah, no, I know. I was going to say, this is not unusual to have private providers. I mean, we see it all the time, and it's a way that everybody's challenged right now was hiring people.
It's impossible. And, and for a jurisdiction of our size, you know, we can't have an inspector that just as mechanical and just as electric and just, they have to be multi-licensed. And many times, not just inspectors, but plans examiners, and can toggle between both. So, we have a challenge internally, just trying to hire people that are full-time employees, much less, you know, than trying to find private provider firms that aren't already stretched. I mean, as it stands now, JPI sometimes can't service us when we need it. So, that's why we put out the RFP to have a backup to our backup.
How do you value it?
How do you value it?
How do you value it? You look at the RFP, and they have a number in there. What, what, how do you, how do you relay that?
The qualifications of the people that they put in the package.
Right.
Say that again.
The qualifications of the people. So, they have to basically submit names of their inspectors. You review their licenses.
Well, no, I understand the qualifications part. What I don't understand is the dollar amount, how you look at the dollar amount and say, "That's reasonable. That's unreasonable." I, I just don't know.
They're all about the same for each different title, each different job function. So, it's hard to really differentiate.
But, we're, we're paying hourly per.
Per individual, yeah.
Per individual, hourly.
As needed.
As needed basis.
Right, correct.
As needed basis.
Right, correct.
Okay. So, so the reason I pulled it out, the reason I pulled it out was not because of the business side. I do know that the challenges we have from a staffing standpoint, and it's statewide. I mean, we see ads all the time, we get emails, and we know people are looking for building inspectors. The only, the only item I wanted to mention is we had approved $25,000. We seem to have exceeded that in February. We continue to use the general, the JPI, and we're now at the end of April. So from a procurement and procurement spend standpoint, or I don't know if it's procurement, but we blew through our approved budget, approved amount, and we're coming back now 60 days, more than 60 days after we blew through the approved amount. So we, we need somebody, I don't know where the process is, but we need somebody to be looking at this, not just with this supplier, but all suppliers, so that we, because this is basically an after-the-fact approval.
And to that point, like, when we don't have, we're not paying an employee for that position, those funds kind of get moved over to the private provider firm that we're using. So it...
Yeah, but I, I, he, what he's asking is, you know, from the accounts payable point of view, they should have been a much quicker trigger to, for that. So, yeah. That, that's, that's not on you, that's more on...
You need to run the business, absolutely, 100%. You got to do what you got to do to deliver services to the residents.
Yeah, yeah. It's when the accounting sign, we'll, we'll take care of that.
That was the only reason I pulled it out.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
I'd move to authorize the city manager to expend funds in the amount of $60,000 for building department services provided by Joe Payne Inc., doing businesses JPI.
City Clerk, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Grill?
Yes.
Commissioner Frasowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Moreau?
Yes.
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Mayor Petrilla?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item six, Commissioner Grill, you had a couple of items for discussion, please.
Yes. Let me just get to my... So the first one I had was an ordinance 2019-18, and for those who don't have the ordinances memorized by heart, neither do I. This is on the, talks about tree permits, removals, and fees for removals, for removing trees. There's been a lot of discussion on this subject on a particular, a particular property, and I don't want to get into the details of that property. But as I started looking at the ordinance, I feel that the ordinance as written is very focused on residential. It talks about, for example, an after-the-permit fee is $100, after, excuse me, and after-the-fact fee is $100. When we look at commercial properties, which would have more than one tree, $100 on a $2 million or $1 million, or hey, even half a million dollar property is nothing. So I would like to ask staff to relook at this and see how, how we may modify that ordinance to better reflect, I think there's just different flavors of tree permits or tree, tree removal. I mean, certainly ordinances think, you know, shouldn't be, they're not money-making, and please, no one to misinterpret, I'm not saying let's, let's try and get more money from people, but it needs to be addressed and have the appropriate teeth into it, so that...
Would it apply differently if it was a necessary storm scenario where they had to be removed because of, they're on power lines or a storm?
Well, the ordinance, I think there's a state ordinance on that, but the, the ordinance as written doesn't even touch that. I believe the state has a...
So, yeah, the state law has changed over the last couple of years where it's given wide latitude for people to cut trees that they feel may endanger their house, they're made, it's all part of like the power structure, you know, the power infrastructure and, but even if they supply some kind of note from an arborist or something, they get off it. I don't have it in front of me, but it's, it came up a couple of years ago, and so there's a lot of flexibility to state. That's another issue where the state has preempted local governments from protecting their trees because mostly it's the utility companies that, because, you know, they want people to be able to cut the branches back away from the trees without having to go through the hassle of getting a permit. To your point, though, it's, you still can have an ordinance that is a tree protection ordinance. I think we're going to talk about whether it's permissible to differentiate commercial versus residential versus the, versus maybe the number, the magnitude of the impact versus, you know, something like that. Because I, there's a big issue with mangroves, for example. A lot of people, a lot, and commercial developments will just take the mangroves out as part of their business model because, because the, the pain isn't enough, you know? But we would have to look into this.
Okay. And that's why I raised it, because I think the ordinance as written allows for that scenario, and I don't believe that's our intent.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of looking at it. There are scenarios where people will rather ask for forgiveness than permission. And I think there are some cities, I'd be curious to see what other cities require. I know sometimes if you cut down a certain tree, like a live oak tree, you've got to replant that same number of, of inches of caliber. So, I mean, some people just cut it down, hope they don't get caught, so.
Well, that's commercial or residential.
Yeah, maybe, maybe the commercial residential isn't the right split, number of trees, type of trees, something more than, more robust than we have. It's a good first step.
We'll look at that.
Could you look at it in terms of assessed property value? Because that would certainly delineate, you know, commercial property that's worth $5 million versus a house that's worth $750.
I'm, I'm just going to leave it with what Alex and I, because it can be done. There is, there are plenty of cities that love their trees and protect their trees because trees are important to avoid heat islands, aesthetic, the whole, a whole bunch of reasons why you want trees. So let me look with Alex and Matthew, if you don't mind.
Okay, thank you for that.
You have a second?
Second item, just wanted a brief discussion. The city manager evaluation, the city manager and I discussed that the contract requires an annual review. That would have been technically tomorrow. We're one year from the last review. I think the city manager and I discussed that. Is it possible for the, the next meeting? Or, I think you're on vacation.
I'm on vacation the next meeting. I did discuss that briefly also with, with the mayor and Commissioner Moreau because I've not had really an opportunity to work with them very much. So I, we could do it at the, at the second meeting in May or push it a little bit more time. And I'm, I'm incapable to whatever you guys want to do to allow me more time to work with the two new elected officials because they really have had barely a month of interaction with me and, and, you know. So whatever they feel comfortable in terms of timing, I'm comfortable with that as well.
For me, I think it's more important that the city manager get a full and fair evaluation. I don't think the rest of the commissioners here would want a small sample being the basis for, because I don't think, I don't think it would be fair to the rest of the commission as, as far as the evaluation or, or the city manager. I'm glad to give an evaluation. What is that, what value does that hold in the grand scheme of things when we've had a very limited working relationship? I'll leave it to others to decide. But my only thought is, do I need to work with them for a full year? No. Am I getting a good flavor right now? Absolutely. And I'm thinking, you know, I don't see why another 30 days but no more than that would give me, you know, I think the experience enough to give a, give a comprehensive evaluation that is, is valuable to the rest of the commission and the residents.
I guess the question I have for city attorney is, I read over the contract, or I feel it's one of the documents, but had a specific, specific date in the contract that said it needs to be done by this date. Would we be in, in breach or...
No. I mean, you're, first of all, when you have that specific date, you don't always know when your, when your commission meetings are going to fall. You've had a pack, a pattern in practice since Alex has been here of being somewhere around April, not exactly at that time. But if you do choose based on his evaluation to enhance salary, it's, I think it's always been retroactive to that year, but it's, you know, the getting, but it's always after you do your evaluation. So you're not, you're not in breach of contract.
We're not renewing his contract, are we?
No.
Contract runs till '25.
Right, right.
So it's just an evaluation.
Right, but if you don't, I guess the question is, is that a term in the contract that we would be in breach of if we haven't done the evaluation by a hard date? And I think the answer is no. You're, this is your city manager, your city manager's contract, and you have the ability to decide amongst yourselves, like, let's, in, in a, in order to have a fair and full evaluation, it's okay to push it out. I wouldn't say avoid it 100% and it's like, let's just do it next year. I mean, don't do that. I don't even think Alex would want that.
Right.
But I think it's fair to, to, you know, set a date, you know, where you guys feel comfortable that you can do it.
So the first meeting back, city manager's back, is the 23rd of May?
Correct.
And then after that, we meet on the 13th of June? And then we have a, is that a two-week break, three, two-week break? So is the question on the table, is it 23rd of May or Commissioner Moreau and Mayor Petrilla, are you more comfortable with the 13th of June?
13th of June, because he's going to be gone on vacation, and I don't really have that opportunity to interact. So that's all right?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
June 13th?
Okay.
Okay. Can we add that to the agenda for that meeting then?
Cool. All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Grill. I had one item for discussion, and that's in reference to the consultants that the city is using for various services. In particular, I'd like to draw your attention to Kim Lee Horn's presentation earlier today on the comprehensive plan reconciliation that they're doing. And I was surprised to be at one of the community meetings for one of the hotels two weeks ago and to see that they're using the same consultant as the city is. And I would have looked at it and said, that might be a conflict of interest, that the same company that we're using to review our comprehensive plan is now also consulting for a developer who's looking to take advantage of the comprehensive plan for their purposes. And I would have thought that Kim Lee Horn would have recused themselves from working with that developer or any of the developers that, that might come before the city. And so my question to the commissioner is, am I alone in these thoughts? And the second question I have is, is that something where we should be maybe revaluing our relationship with this particular consultant? If the appearance is that they might be working for two conflicting entities at the same time?
Let me just give you some thoughts first of all. I told them that I did not want them to be doing any transportation work for the developers. I didn't have an objection of them, them doing infrastructure work in terms of calculating how much, how they're going to keep track of the stormwater into their system within their facility, or how they're going to run the water lines into their facility, and any of the other infrastructure things that are all within that property. But I felt that when we were looking at the transportation side in terms of solution and modeling and everything else, that would not be, in my mind, compatible with what they're, you know, their efforts that they've been doing and working with us on transportation solutions. So I already communicated with their developer city attorney, and they're going to be making a, a change at least on the transportation side. So I do share some of your concerns. I kind of more, was more really focused on the transportation side of the question because it's, it's a key component of what's going to be happening in, in the Boulevard.
So, Ms. Mayor, what are they doing for the, and for what developer?
So at, at the Serrata Community Meeting that was on the 13th of April, when they had their list of consultants, architects, and so on, it did not list in what capacity. It just listed Kim Lee Horn as one of the consultants.
Right. They're doing site work as well. They're doing site work, and they were, and they were going to, they were planning on doing transportation work. And I kind of like stopped that one. I haven't objected to the site work, but if the commission feels an objection to the site work as well, we, I can, I can have that conversation as well.
And I, I mean, I, excuse me, a few meetings ago, I brought up a similar concern, and I know Commissioner Frasowski, you, being in the industry, said you received similar criticism because your multi, multifaceted services. And I think, you know, so how do we ensure, from a city perspective, that we're using the suppliers and consultants who are going to give us the best solutions and the best advice? And then I'm going to ask the city manager, city attorney at some point in this discussion to give an opinion, are we in a position to tell any developer who they can and cannot use? That's, or does that cross the line?
I don't know if we can interfere with their business, contractual business relationship if they already have one. We can certainly tell them, we won't use you again if this is what you're doing because we need to keep this compartmentalized.
Yeah.
We need to keep this separate because there will one day be a presentation where you're making a presentation on behalf of the city, and then you're going to be making a presentation on behalf of the applicant.
Yeah.
And...
Right.
I kind of feel the same way.
The first question I would have is, what are they doing?
Yeah, and I, but I don't know what they're doing.
And then if we deem it to be a conflict, we control what we control on our side.
Well, the other part of it that I think about, if they're going to be here, they may need to register as lobbyists. I think, I'd have to look at what we adopted as lobbyists, but unless they're meeting, I'd have to look at it. That was the other thing, I was thinking about it, that if they're going to be part of the quasi-judicial hearing, et cetera. I concur with counsel here. You can't, you can't, on that side of it, I mean, certainly Alex can strongly suggest to them, you know, find somebody else to the developer, but they can't tell them, you know, don't use, or use this. In fact, I would ask them not to do that, you know, let them pick who to use. I mean, you don't want to get caught telling people who, you know, which contractors and designers to use. I mean, you know, they need to be picking their own and falling on their own sword if they have to. But hopefully they pick the best and the brightest.
Right, I think, given the, I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to wrap up, but yeah, we have the ability to control our own contracts.
And I would just say, from a transportation, traffic, we know, you know, standpoint, we know this is a very sensitive topic for our residents and our community in, in all the discussions. So I would just have the desire to have it as, as clean, as objective, as thorough as it can be. And even then, we'll still, I know we'll still have more discussions about it.
What I would like, if everyone's in agreement, is that the city manager be tasked with meeting with somebody from Kimmy Horn who says, this is exactly the capacity, and have it out, they can outline it in a letter or whatever, this is the capacity, we're doing business with them. And then we have it in writing, and then we can evaluate based on what they're doing, maybe something fairly innocuous, and maybe something that they just have calculations for, and it's a, it's a path of least resistance, or it may be something that's, I mean, inextricably intertwined with the decision-making process that we have. So I think maybe that's probably our first step.
Yeah, I, I'll do that. But just, just be mindful that already on the transportation side, I already, you know, have, you know, have those conversations where I found it to be a conflict, you know, serving them and serving us on transportation.
Well, what I'm, the only thing I'm concerned about is when you talk to these folks, and they may feel like it's a, you know, hey, we don't want you to do this, and then they go over there, and then they're like, you know, they're probably not going to be happy with it, but this is what we're doing. I would really like them to say, look, hey, look, this is what we're doing.
Right.
And then you can say, oh, you know, bring it back to the commission if they're comfortable with it. Fine, if we're not, then we'll let you know if we're going to go in a different direction.
Is that a discussion to have with, with any prospective developer as opposed to who they choose as a sub? Look, developer, here's, here's concerns, here's who we're using, and to the point I was making, we want whatever study you do to be as... as clear, as independent, as objective as it can be, and, and as, as you present and bring this to the city.
I don't.
And then they're in charge of their own destiny.
Yeah, but.
I just don't want to be in a position where we're guiding developers into, you know, if you, because I don't want them to think, hey, I think you guys just told us what parameters you want us to be operating in. And, 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 and some de facto approval if you do it that way. And sometimes they see it like that, so.
Yeah, but in, in, in this situation, I mean, to me, the horse has left the barn, because we, a year ago, almost, we engaged Kim Lee Horn to do the safety study on the Boulevard, and they're going to be making recommendations on how to improve the safety of the Boulevard. Well, improving the safety of the Boulevard and addressing their transportation management plan that they had to provide to us on how are they going to manage the vehicles that they put on the Boulevard, that to me is like, and, and I can undo the 10 months or 11 months of work that they've already done, so that's why I said, no, that needs to just get somebody else.
But they also started the evaluation appraisal process three years ago.
Right.
And, and so again, if, if they now come before the commission, having worked on the comprehensive plan, they come with a conditional use application and a quasi judicial process. Can we get a report by the next commission meeting of all of our contracts with Kim Lee Horn and the scope of those contracts? Would that be possible?
I'm looking at, I'm not going to be here, so I'm looking at, yeah, Vince, yes, okay.
Could we add another column of spend by category?
Yeah, and line item, each.
Yeah, since I think they give, they have multiple services.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And then what are the, again, we're not going to dictate to the developer what they're going to do, but we can certainly reevaluate our relationships with our contractors. What are the ramifications if we choose to make changes? Can we make changes?
With existing contracts, I mean, I'd have to look at their contract.
Yeah. Yeah, they're.
I also want you to be aware, I mean, there's some things that might be a little so tenuous that they're not connected, they doesn't amount to a conflict, I'm going to just say conflict or potential, I know what a, what lawyers have to do.
We call them business conflicts versus legal conflicts.
I know what we have to do dealing with conflicts, but I'm also very sensitive to the appearance of a conflict, and I know that this was an issue a while ago, and I know that the community is concerned about it. And, but at the same time, you have to remember that you're also trying to get really good professional services here, and you don't want to cut yourself off by just totally saying uniformly, we're not, we're not going to, if, if you're going to do business in our city, we're not going to do business with you. You may end up finding yourself, you know, kind of shooting yourself in the foot. I don't, I don't know the amount of professional, I mean, I know Kim Lee Horn's are, I know them as an engineering firm, and they have good planners there, but, you know, so, but I just, I think we, it's one of those case-by-case situations, but I can look at the contract unless you have it rated.
No, I don't, I don't. It is a continuing services contract. They're set up under state law. You know, so we have a specific number of work orders under that contract that get approved by the commission when they're in excess of 25. But the, the continuing services agreement doesn't obligate work. They give us proposals, comes, it comes back to the commission, and it gets approved on a case-by-case basis, so. So you have the ability to say, yeah, I'm, I'm okay with this work order, because I don't see any kind of conflict with anybody else. I'm not okay with this work order, so on a case-by-case basis, it can be evaluated.
I'm just going to mention this to Matthew, because he works on this a lot, like, maybe what we could do is look at our templates and see if it's possible to have some kind of, um, language in there relating to conflicts.
I think that's a good idea.
If you proceed, you know, just so that there's a communication with the city about, hey, I'm going to take this job, but check, you know, just some kind of, so Matthew, is that something we can put when we solicit these contracts with engineering companies and things like that, where we could just, some sort of, uh, check with us before you take on a big job or something like that?
Yes, no, we, we definitely can add it to our template, but just to reiterate what Alex said, Kim Lee Horn's contract is a very specific statutory regulated continuing service agreement that has no end date on it, but rather the way you limit the work is just not issuing task orders. So you don't really need to terminate the contract, you can just say, no. Right? Or you could terminate, I mean, we have other continuing service agreements with other, but it's, it was procured a certain way, there's certain terms in the agreement, it's a very statutory regulated process.
But we have multiple different contracts with them, it isn't just one?
Under, under my, yeah, my understanding is that we have one that we issued specific task orders under continuously, hence.
We got multiple engineering firms under those contracts.
Correct.
Exactly.
Correct.
And, and maybe, I don't know, maybe there's a way that we can look at those contract templates and see if there's any way that we can put them on notice now that, hey, we'd like you to check in with us if you're taking on private work, so that we can.
In our community, yeah.
More of a friendlier fashion where, you know, they understand our, you know, the city's position, and also vice versa, and then maybe we have, develop some kind of language, it's, it's a good point. But I also want to be careful, like, not to totally leave yourself with the inability to get professional, professional service agreements, because you're denying all, you know.
Yeah, but, but the same token, if, if I were to call your office to solicit legal services, the first thing you're going to do is, you're going to go through your list, exactly.
And the Florida bar is, I would, I don't know what, I don't know what professional engineers do, I don't know what architects have to do.
Right.
You know, so, yeah.
Because they do have access to confidential information, they're working on our comprehensive plan as we speak, so they know what recommendations they're going to be making in the future.
Those should be all subject to 119 public records requests, right?
Well, yeah.
Aren't they all public record?
Yeah, well, conversations, like, if they said, yes, your point's a good one, that should they sit down with someone at the city and say, hey, I think this is a good idea to recommend as a comp plan change, it's just a conversation, it's not a public record. And then at the same time, that same planner, you know, I'm, for God's sakes, I'm not saying Kim Lee Horn's doing this at all. I'm just saying that the scenario, I'm thinking about, you know, my, you know, doing, we have to do ethics CLEs, you know, right? So I'm thinking of a scenario where, like, you know, okay, you're sitting, having a conversation, and that private planner consultant suggests changing this policy, and it actually ends up benefiting a private client. Yeah, that's, you know, that's what you want, that, that wouldn't be confidential, but it's not a public record, there's no way of finding out about it.
Right, but we do have confidentiality clauses in our contracts to a degree, but you're right, I mean, certain things will never be able to prove if it's, if it's a verbal.
As an attorney, I have attorney-client privilege with you all, you're my clients, and I can kind of invoke that when I need to. I'm not so sure what Kim Lee Horn has with, with the city, how they can.
Yeah, and, and as you say, not to pick on them, but I think any, any supplier that we, that does work on our behalf, if we find any ethical or breach of confidentiality, I think we would terminate them by 9:00 AM tomorrow morning.
So would there, okay, so as far as public records, I know our contracts are, by law, by statute, has a large public record section in it, and actually, the statute says it has to be like a 22 font or something like that, it's gigantic, and, uh, but as far as, yeah, you bring up a good point, let, let me, let, let's, Matthew, help me out here, he's still dealing with criminal.
Well, yeah, we, I draft a majority of the agreements with, with Andrew, but I would say the only thing that I've seen confidentiality-wise, considering we're a local government, subject to 119, is potentially trade secrets. Something that's trademarked or infringed upon or copyrighted from the company itself. That they have, right? But, but all the work they're doing for us is, is clearly a public record, period. All the emails they exchange with us is a public record.
But if they're designing, like, for example, a security system for the city, there is an exemption in the public records law for.
Like, no one can come to City Hall and ask for the blueprint of the City Hall. Right? That's an exemption for safety reasons. There are certain exemptions in the public records, but all of our agreements have public record language in it, and are subject to 119.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just want to sort of confirm what exactly we're putting together here, so it's, it's not exactly the contracts, it's actually the task orders, outstanding purchase orders that I think we're interested in, because we're, like we're saying, there's one sort of governing contract for all of this, and then we issue task orders based on that contract, so we can get you a list of, if I'm understanding, sort of what you're looking for exactly, outstanding task orders, purchase orders that have been awarded, that are currently active with Kim Lee Horn, is that consistent with the?
Active and closed.
Maybe for the last 24 months.
For a period of, whatever period of time that doesn't take you a week to pull. I don't know what, what data's available easily, and then, is there any sort of categorization? I'm sorry, but it's your request, but some sort of categorization of the task orders, so if, if you've got, I'll make this up, 20 task orders, and five of them are category A, five category B, you know, if you could sort them by, here's category A, category B, I don't know if you have that.
Yeah.
Commodity code, or, or some sort of code. I think that's what.
Yeah.
We're trying to.
You said 24 months, so I'll go.
No, no.
24 months until.
Is, is that a reasonable, again, something that won't take you a week to put together?
That's doable, yeah.
Okay. That gives us adequate.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Vince.
Sure. Hi, Jeff Gaverman, Three Palms Point, thanks for letting me speak. I see this as a major conflict of interest. This, this consulting company is, know the inner workings of our comp plan. They can kind of steer the city a certain way to create loopholes, and then give that information to developers. We know how all, how these backroom deals go with these multi-billion dollar corporations. This is America, and this happens all the time. So, as Matt said, as part of your contracts going forward, you should have a no-compete clause. They have, okay, anybody that they do business with, that's a competitor, possible competitor with the city. One of the comments was, you can limit them on what they can do with the Serrata. Would that really happen? How could we, how could we know that? Again, all these backroom deals occur in America, and big money takes precedent over everything. As, as you guys hiring them as consultants, you guys can end their contract. I was a consultant for many years. If you're right, if you're right, your contracts properly, you can end their contract if you find a conflict of interest. And as far as the comment about shooting ourselves in the foot, there's lots of other companies that we can hire to do this work, not ones who are going to sell us out to big corporations. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay. We have staff reports and commission reports. Amber?
Mr. Mayor. Yes, Mr. Mayor, two, two quick updates. One is that you are probably going to see some activity up here at the old Christmas store. They're pursuing a demolition permit to get rid of that building. There are no plans for development yet. But it's the same person who owns that lot, and also owns the lot on 75th and Gulf, on, on the corner of the, I guess it would be the southeast corner of that intersection. I know they have been in discussions with the Don't Tell Mama owners to try to assemble, you know, something bigger, but nothing, nothing there yet. But, but you see demolition people, they're going to start asking you questions as to what the plans are, there, there are no plans. Other than, it, it's just become more expensive for them to maintain that building than to just go ahead and get rid of it. And secondly, we had a meeting with the property owners of the Windexy property. They are in the advanced stages of negotiating a 15-year lease with Cigar Paradise. Is, apparently they have a location in downtown St. Pete. It is a high-end cigar store where you have a warehouse for cigars, and you'll have, you know, areas for sitting down to have a, have a glass of wine and smoke your cigars. They do a really expensive air conditioning system, so you get a lot of air exchanges, and, you know, it doesn't, you know, smell like a, like a big cigar store. So that, that process is, is going through. The, the, the cigar store doors require a conditional use approval, so you'll be coming to the commission, it's not an approve, it's not a use by right. So you'll probably see, you know, some application in the next few months coming in front of you for the use of that facility. It'd be great, at least, to finally get something up there. They do have to upgrade the parking lot and the landscaping and all that, so at least from the cover appeal side, it's just going to look much, much better, improved property from, from that side. And is, is a use that, we've got to look at the, at the details, but it's not a high-intensity use. So, because they do have, you do have residential on the north side, so it's important to, on the, on the north side of Windexy, the south side is, is commercial, but the north side is, is, you've got some single-family homes there. That's all I got.
Thank you. City Attorney?
Yeah, just one quick thing, I mean, today during the workshop, we talked about, you know, thinking about problems to prevent and, or to solve, and you heard today, one of the things that, in my mind, I've been actively making a list in my mind as I've been working through these materials, things that I've encountered over the nine years, and, and one of them, which you're going to definitely have to, in some way, deal with, or you're just going to continue to hear about it, because I've heard about it for years and years, you know, which I've, I call beach, public-private beach conflict. And it's been going on, it's not just a resort issue, first of all. There are condos on the beach that have been kicking people off of their beach. There is the Don Cesar folks that have blocked M and N now. I've heard them talk about wanting to keep people off of their beach. We've got the, um, you know, the secret sidewalk down in between 28th and 30th, even though the city owns it. You know, we've got folks that think that they, you know, certain people, the members of the public shouldn't be on it, so just to be clear, you know, you heard two people talk about it, and it's a real issue. I'm on a list, sir, for emails on, for municipal attorneys all over the state. People are trying to figure this out, how do we deal with this? Access ways, how do we, it's going, it's a, it's definitely one of those sort of check-the-box issues that I had in my mind when we were talking today about problems to solve, because as a beach community, St. Pete Beach is in your name, beach is in your name, the population's going to increase in Florida, it's not going to decrease, and those folks want to come to the Sunshine State, get on the beach, and they don't know it's, whether it's a condo-owned beach, or a resort-owned beach, or a public beach, well, in fact, even the county themselves, we've had issues with the county beach vendor actually being someone, you know, not anymore, but, you know, we've had issues there, so that was even on a public beach where there was conflict. And so I, I see that, I just wanted to make that as a point, because it was brought up twice today by two people, that validly, I guess, you know, it's going to continue to happen. And it's not just resorts, it's going, it's everywhere. And it's not just in the city, but you guys have a great beach, so everybody wants to be here.
Thank you. Commissioner Marone?
Today, one of my, things on my wish list was granted. The path that our day trippers have carved through the sand dunes and the sea oats on Fifth Avenue today was closed up with ropes, very, looked very attractive, and a bunch of folks were out there today planting sea oats in the path, and down towards Fourth as well. So it looks great, and thank you very much, City Manager, for getting that done. And we had another crazy, crazy, busy weekend in Passag grill with cars backed up and backed around. busy weekend in Passag grill with cars backed up and backed around every single street, the streets were full of cars, and then the weekend ended in tragedy down by the jetty with that, that, everybody knows the current, it takes you one way or the other, and it's very, very tragic circumstances, obviously, city's condolences to all those who are family and friends of the deceased, it looked like a full court press out there with law enforcement, with emergency personnel, Coast Guard helicopters, I mean, they were all seem Johnny on the spot, so it seemed like a great response for the tragic circumstances, where I think the historic preservation board is getting ever that much closer to deciding on a design for the lights on the Vina Del Mar Bridge, both color and design, we're working, I'm working on some stuff with the City Manager on dealing with the Sheriff's Office and what I think we need to communicate to them once we collectively decide what their responsibility should be as it relates to enforcement ordinances, what of those ordinances we want them to enforce versus those that should be the responsibility of how our code enforcement officers, so that once those duties are delineated and they're clear, the tasks are clear, then we can hold folks, you know, accountable for completing those tasks, including our code enforcement, when giving them some direction, this is, this is the scope of your purview, we want you guys focused on this, Sheriff's Office focused on this, because right now is, I feel like, and I'm hearing it from the residents, that the Sheriff's Office, they're really nice folks, they're great, there's not a lot of crime out here, there isn't, there isn't a lot of crime fighting going on, but I think some folks think that they are the ones that should be giving the tickets for the dogs on the beach and the alcohol on the beach and things that are going on on the beach that shouldn't be going on, are they supposed to be, are they not supposed to be, so I think that's something we need to get cleared up, get some clear direction on, I've talked to City Manager about motorhomes in our neighborhood overnight, motorhomes, we had one the other night, again, right down the street from my house, I could hear their generator running all night, you know, they parked for, during the day and just said, why should I get a hotel room? I can just stay here, I've got everything I need, and, you know, we have a place for that, it's called Fort De Soto, so, those are the kind of things we're working on, more to come.
If, if I may, Commissioner, when you start talking about distinguishing between city personnel enforcing codes versus the contract with the Sheriff's Department, keep in mind liability, because there's a difference between local, local police type actions versus sheriffs under the contract, so just keep that.
I'm talking about writing a ticket.
Yeah, well, okay.
Yeah, I, I'm not talking about taking somebody to jail.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm talking about, and, and frankly, what I'm saying is, I don't know what the scope of their responsibilities are, so I can't even speak to whether they're doing what they're supposed to be doing or not doing what they're supposed to be doing, so I got to get a handle on the scope and what instructions they've been given and what guidance they've been given, and then we go from there, I, I'm really looking from it, in my mind, I see the St. Pete Beach Police Department, okay, for many, many, many years out here, and I know what they did, okay, and I know I can't conflate the two, because we have a contract with Sheriff's Office, which may have a very different scope of responsibility than we had with the city of St. Pete Beach Police Department, so work in progress.
Okay, yeah, just ask you to keep that in mind while you have that conversation.
I mean, I too would like to have a better understanding of what, one, what the contract looks like, and two, what we tell the sheriff our priorities are, maybe we could have a report on that or their, say, workshop on that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm having some meetings set up, and after those meetings, maybe we'll come back, we'll report for the entire commission in terms of, you know, what would you?
Thank you. Commissioner Frazlowski?
Thank you, just a couple of things, we have a Bel Vista Civic Association meeting on Thursday night, and Jennifer was kind enough to say she'd attend, and Chief Gilpatrick's going to be there to talk about hurricane preparedness, and then Friday night, we have the last of our concert series, so those have been great, so looking forward to that, hopefully we'll have some good weather, and that's about it.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Grubbs?
Couple of things, Jennifer, did we have the hurricane expos coming up this, is it this weekend, Chief?
Yeah, not this weekend.
It's not this weekend, okay, so stay tuned, is, okay, okay, so the city, the city's running a hurricane expo, so stay tuned, stay tuned for that, because, yes, we do have to start thinking about hurricane season, and we do need the rain, but not a lot, I will be attending the IEMO2, the Institute for Elected Municipal Officials Part II class later this week, Friday and Saturday, up north of Orlando, it's run by the Florida League of Cities, there's a, there's a first class for newly elected officials, so the new members of the, of the commission may want to look into that, they, they don't hold them all that frequently, but it's a good class and they give you a good overview of Florida legislation, how things get done in, in the state, as speaking to FLC, just, I think everyone's getting the emails, there are a lot of bills floating around in Tallahassee as they close out the legislative session, some of them, as I've mentioned before, have, could, have some impact to us here in the city, this whole home rule and being preempted on some subjects, as well as, of course, looking forward to the budget, there's one floating around for us, for municipal officials particularly, and financial disclosure, so stay tuned, we'll see how those close out, and of course, with the budget, we hope we have our fire stations in the budget coming forward, Gulf Winds Drive continues to deteriorate, those who know, those of you who use the road see it, there's now a, I call it a sinkhole, I don't know, my clerk left, at the intersection right smack in the middle of 64th and Gulf Winds, it's a sinkhole, there's been probably four, if not more reclaimed water breaks in that area, so I believe, it is just my unofficial opinion, it's washed out some of the subsurface, so we've got a big hole in the sink, and Public Works has given us preliminary that it's a big job, and we're going to have to bring in big equipment, because it's around a 10-inch water pipe, so stay tuned, we'll be getting a schedule, but Public Works says there could be some significant traffic disruption for, for a while while they do that, it's just, as everyone knows, we are looking at Gulf Winds Drive and to redo it, I know we don't want to throw good money after bad if we're going to redo the road, I'm just, I'm not sure we've got enough runway in the, in the existing or what's left in the roadway until we get going on the next project, but that's for a different discussion, I just also want to have a, make a shout out to Waste Connections, our, our waste collection company, we had a problem in, in neighborhood in my district this week, I blame it on Duke Energy's contractor, came unannounced, didn't tell anybody, trucks couldn't get down the road, garbage didn't get picked up, contacted Waste Connections, and they actually came this morning, that was yesterday, they were there before the sun, and they committed, we'll get there before the sun, we'll get you picked up on a special pickup run, and going forward, since we don't know what Duke's going to do, we'll make sure these neighborhoods get picked up early, so shout out to Waste Connections, they've done a, a great job, very responsive, so, that's all I had, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Grubbs?
Just a quick question for the City Manager, with that cigar bar going in, possibly with the Windexy, would there be an opportunity for some public-private parking, maybe?
Yes, so, yeah, so as part of the, the analysis that we have to conduct when they submit the, the package, is that we have to see how the space inside the facility is going to be used, so, for example, any kind of storage space doesn't need, doesn't require parking, so, you know, it, it depends on the distribution of how much is storage, how much is retail, how much is the bar lounge area, so when we get that, we'll be able to run the numbers and determine what is the required parking level that they need, ballpark, I, I would say that there is an opportunity for, you know, for them not to consume the entire parking in the area, and then being able to do some park share and agreement, because we all know that all of the restaurants around there are in, are in need of parking, so if, if it works, it works for them, it's, it's great, because it's a way to make additional money, but first, they got, we got to go through the calculations on parking requirements, and until I get the details, I can't tell you that for sure.
Okay, Corey Avenue on Sunday mornings, would be able to use that, things at the community center, would be able to use that, possibly?
Yeah, and, and that's, that's a completely separate request too, because we can also talk to them about non-concurrent uses, because I don't know that a cigar shop is going to be open at 10:00 AM on Sunday morning, so.
Right.
We might be able to find all the uses that, you know, for the Sunday market, you know, they might have more spaces available, so.
Okay, all right, thanks, again, I just wanted to mention, Commissioner Frazlowski, this is the la, I believe it's the last of the spring concerts, and it's a Tom Petty tribute band, so should be a nice night, you know, get on out, we've had great, great turnouts for these concerts, and it's really kind of a, a really fun thing, so, put it on your calendar, that's all I have.
Great, thank you. I have a couple of reports and announcements, so we're working with the communications offices here for the last few weeks, just looking at ideas on, on how we can, you know, build our relationship with our business community, how we can improve communication with our residents, so we have two ideas that we're going to be launching in the next couple weeks here, the first one is, the way that we do our, the way our commissioners do our community updates every other week or so, we're looking to do a business spotlight video on the opposite weeks, so we're going to be inviting local businesses to submit their names, we're going to have, it'll be a random process, there won't be any favoritism, and then we'll be able to do a, a, you know, a local business community spotlight, and just highlight some of the local businesses in our community, introduce our, you know, residents to them, and just, you know, help, you know, promote some of our local businesses and just build some of those bridges, and the other thing that we looked at was, I can, you know, speak for myself coming in brand new, you know, I didn't realize how big the building was, I didn't realize there was a second sto, you know, second floor and all, you know, this extra space and staff and everybody else, and I, I think sometimes, you know, when I was sitting on the other side, it almost feels like, okay, you know, I'm not sure who these people are, you know, how many are there, what do they do, and so on, so one of the things that we looked at was doing a City Hall open house, where we can invite the public to come in, see the different apartments, meet the different staff, we're going to be talking to the chief about maybe getting some of the firemen out to do a barbecue, but just as, as a way for the community to be able to meet the staff so that it's not just a bunch of names and faceless entities, but rather to see that these are, you know, real people, you know, we are real people, we work in a, in a real, you know, building, and some of us, some of you work, you know, much longer hours, and so I think it'd be really great for the community to be able to come in and meet, you know, the, the city hall that serves the community, so those are two initiatives that we're going to be just launching in the next couple of weeks here, we'll have more information on that City Hall open house as we work with the staff and finalize some of those, some of those plans, so.
Good.
That is all I have, unless there's anything else, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.